I have seven o'clock. So at seven o'clock PM, I would like to call this meeting to order. John, can you do a roll call for us?
Yes, President Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Colbert.
Yeah.
Mr. Duckett.
Here.
Mr. Hanchett.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Then.
The town administrator, Carl Snyder.
Here.
Police chief, David Burse.
Here.
Public works director, Darnell Bond. Town clerk, John Hudson, here.
Thank you, John, and we can all rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Did I mess up, guys?
You switched two of the lines.
Okay.
It's okay.
Sorry.
It still needs sense.
All right. We will move on to consent to the agenda. Do we have a consent to the agenda before us tonight?
Without objection.
Um. Would you say, I'm sorry?
Oh, he said. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
Yes, I have a consent to the agenda. On the proclamations of Pink as well as Pride Month, we have had an opportunity to discuss either, and I would like both of those to be tabled.
Okay. Um. So we would table them. They're just both already late.
Well, they're not late. We haven't discussed anything.
Okay, so, sorry. John or Kyle, can you advise? How we're, should we, how we proceed to change the agenda?
So I mean, if table it till later for discussion or another meeting, the motion needs a second. And about.
Okay, so it's a motion. Is that, that's my question.
So it sounds like a motion was made by Commissioner Duckett. She needs a second and the board decides.
Okay, so is there a second to favor these two pro- to move these two, table these two proclamations to next?
Second.
Okay, so I'm gonna actually, John, are you okay with the voting on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I got a motion that was made by Commissioner Duckett, and it was seconded by Commissioner Lot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, very well.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion before we vote? I'm just gonna, like, I'm just gonna say, like, because this agenda has been published, so there's been some time to talk about it, so I'm just gonna clarify that. I know we haven't talked about it as a board yet.
So can I, so can I clarify? Have not. You said there has been time to discuss, and it has been, just because we have access to it does not mean that we have discussed it. So we have not discussed these proclamations.
Okay. Um, and you want to discuss them, you don't want to discuss them tonight?
No, that's why I'm asking for them to be tabled, and so that we can move forward with the vote on that.
Okay. All right. I will call for a vote. All in favor?
It's going over.
Made the motion.
Yep, the motion's been made, but your ducket was seconded by Commissioner Lot. I'll take the roll call of the vote. Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
So just so I'm clear, we're voting on the motion to-
That is correct. We're going to table the proclamations tonight to have more discussion at a later time.
Nay.
Okay.
Nay.
Colbert is nay.
Let John go through the roll. He's doing the voting a little different tonight. Sorry.
Commissioner Duckett, how do you vote?
I vote that we, that we postponed the vote. I mean. Yes.
Yay. Okay, very well. President Franklin, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay. Mr. Hanchett, how are you vote?
Nay.
Okay. And Commissioner Lot, how do you vote? Yay or nay, or abstain?
Oh, she's gone.
She's actually on. Let me see.
Can't see her anymore. Yeah. Lost her.
Well, then clearly you can't move forward because she was on.
Yes.
We have to have-
We have to have her come back on.
We're in the middle of voting, so we have to wait for her.
Okay. Let's text her.
Call and see if she's back on. She has.
Do you have her? I was getting ready to text.
Calling to see if she, or text or call. She says she's trying to get in now. It's just connecting.
Just a clarification, even if the, if the motion fails to table it, it will come up for another vote to approve it.
She's back.
Another motion after this? Can I make it an alternate tabling motion?
But hold on, I'm asking to table this, and per the Meetings Act, we don't have to have to, when I'm asking for it to be tabled, that means we're tabling it to discuss at a different time. We're taking a vote to table. But yeah, that we haven't discussed. So why are we doing that? Why are we, I'm asking to table something that we have not yet discussed, and now we're taking a vote on whether we're tabling that or not? I'm asking as Commissioner to table it, because we have not discussed it. So that is not per the Meetings Act. If it's at the table, then it's tabled, so we can discuss.
So.
Because it wasn't an agenda.
So it's an agenda item, so I think, I think that what you're trying to say, when we get to it on the agenda, if you table it, it's different from tabling it.
And that's fine. So either way, okay, then that's.
Is that, did I get that correct?
Motion, is that correct, for right now? Commissioner Duckett, you want to withdraw the motion right now? Because then we can do it right when it comes up on the agenda.
We can do that then, when it comes up.
Then we will withdraw the motion that you've made already. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have consent to the agenda? Then? Hearing, no objection, we will move forward with the closed session summary from yesterday, June 27, 2022. Thank you for popping that up, John, because I handed it off to you and didn't keep a copy. I will read that into the record. On June 22, 2022, there was a closed session of the board that started at 7:11 PM. It was held virtually via Zoom, and it was under provisions Article 3-305B8 to consult with staff consultants or other individuals about pending potential litigation. And 14, before a contract is awarded or bids are open to directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal of public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in a competitive bidding or proposal process. We went into closed session to discuss annexation Area 3 and professional services contracts. The members who were present at the meeting were myself, Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Hanchett, Commissioner Lot. And those, all of us in attendance voted to go into closed session. The topics were discussed were potential litigation and legal counsel. No actions, votes, or anything was, were taken. So the next thing we have is the meeting minutes, board work session minutes, May regular town minutes, and I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve those. Normally, we would approve the proclamations at the same time, but if we can, is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes and financial reports from May?
So move.
Uh, is there a second?
A second.
John, you want a roll call vote or?
Yeah, we'll do.
Okay.
Mr. Colbert, how do you vote? Okay. Commissioner Duckett, how do you vote?
Hi.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Hanchett, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Lot, how do you vote?
Hi.
Great, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go on to the, thank you, two proclamations. I know Commissioner Duckett, you want to make a motion, but I was wondering if you would consider a motion to move the approval slash discussion, to kind of table these to the end of the meeting when we're discussing the policies, the last policy is a citation and proclamation policy. So it might, they might tie into that discussion. Would you be willing?
No. Table it now. No. I'm asking to have this table to another time to discuss it, until we have more time to discuss it, not tonight.
Okay.
I've had enough time to consider it.
Okay. Okay, so now. I'm sorry, do we vote on that, or do I make the decision on that? Kyle or John, I'm sorry, I just need you to take me through the procedure. It seems like we vote on it.
Yeah, normally, I'm looking up now, so it is, does usually, to table usually does take a motion of the board.
It does.
Okay.
The board to table an item.
Okay, so Commissioner Duckett has made a motion to- Can you give a date to table, or it's June, July 12 is our next meeting? Is that?
July 12. July 12 should be fine.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, or the motion for second, is to table the Juneteenth proclamation and Pride proclamations to the July 12 meeting? For discussion and approval, or just discussion?
Discussion.
Okay. For discussion. Is there a second?
Can we, can we, can we not put a date on it? Can we talk about it and then decide to bring it back into the, to a meeting? To put it on the agenda after we talk about it and discuss in detail what was going on? I mean, because I just actually saw this today myself, even though the agenda has been, I don't always have time to look at everything. And just wanna, you know, understand what we're doing.
Well, what's not to understand, though, is just a proclamation, I mean.
What's not to understand is that I don't understand it until I take time to.
But no other proclamation have we ever had to discuss it, what the issue.
That's really true. We've already understood what the proclamation was. We haven't had to actually dissect this and understand how it's going to impact our community when we're just making proclamations. So, and that is our duty as commissioners to be able to have a discussion about this. So it's just not, we make up proclamations and pass them just because it's a proclamation doesn't mean that it's a good proclamation. Or that we need to be making a proclamation right now.
I mean, I think we got, I just have to be focused on then all this extra stuff. We got a lot of stuff that we, we are, we should be focusing on, or that we are, are doing, but we're not, I mean, stuff like this doesn't take precedent, I don't think. That's not what we're here for. And I think that we, we should take time to, to discuss.
I guess, so we did the, we did a Black History Month proclamation, and we did a Women's History Month proclamation. And so the proclamation is kind of-
But do we have to, to hash this out when I've asked to table it, and then another commissioner is already asking that we take more time to discuss this at a later date, maybe not even putting a date on it? And that makes sense to have a discussion about it. We don't have to have a date on it, but to have a discussion about it before we even make a date on it.
I don't know. I don't understand.
I don't know what the push.
If we're gonna have a discussion, if we're gonna have a discussion. Sorry, if we're gonna have a discussion in public, we have to have it at a meeting. Now, Juneteenth was 10 days ago, so.
Because Juneteenth is over. So the thing is, that's the thing. So all of these events have already taken place. So I don't know what the rush is now, where we're almost in July. So this is not gonna affect us right now. So why is there, what my concern is, why is the rush for proclamations? Why are we rushing a proclamation when we have so many things on the board to consider, considering economic development of this town, annexation, the budget? Things that we're, one proclamation, thing not to want to be able to discuss, which that's a concern for me.
So I agree. Go ahead, Charles.
No, is the overall concern, I'm imagining the overall concern is how, which proclamations are determined to be, you know, what's, what's being proclaimed? So it's sounding like a policy concern that needs to be discussed, and is, am I getting that right? Okay, so.
My service. What did you say? Say it again, please.
I was saying, it's sounding like that there is a concern about the, the policy of, you know, which and when proclamations are being made, because I think if we're, if we're going to be doing proclamations, you know, we're, like you mentioned, we're behind on Juneteenth. It's the end of Pride Month now. I think a proclamation policy needs to be in place going forward. So that's why, if we're gonna have a discussion about it, there needs to be a time limit on when we're doing it, so it's in place for when these other months come up throughout the year.
And I think.
That, that may make sense, but the whole, I guess for me, the whole thing is, we haven't discussed any of these, you know, I, you know. And so I think that we should start discussing to see which ones are gonna benefit the town and which ones are not.
And then also, I want to make, make sure that I make this clear, that from what I understand, Mayor, you constantly say that you want transparency. I don't understand how there's transparency when this was put out, and because we didn't have a chance to look at it, also it's put out after the fact that we're, it's like you're trying to push something in June before we get, well, this is not transparent.
We're trying, we're trying to be inclusive.
Excuse me, Thomas, this is not Commissioner Hatchett. This is, this is not being transparent enough that you, what is the fight about giving us enough time to discuss it? Because I thought your main concern was always transparency. And now you transparency, when we're asking for an opportunity to discuss something later, at a later date, or maybe just discuss it overall, we need a discussion, and yes, some policy in place. There's nothing here.
So, so two things, because I, I am very transparent. There is a citation, there is a citation policy that is being discussed at the end of this meeting, because there are, is an increasing demand for citations, and we really need a policy on it. These, these citations that were put together were on the agenda, and you all had the packet, so you have had time and transparency to review.
Say that we've had time, because you don't know what my schedule was like, and I don't know what yours is like. So it doesn't mean, this is 117-page packet.
And these are the first few things in it.
Well, this is, and trust me, it doesn't, it doesn't come out like clockwork. So trust me, you know that. So what I'm saying is, we need time.
I, I understand that. I'm just, I, I, I do my, I do. Can I, can I finish, please? So I work very hard to get you guys stuff early, so you have time to review it and comment back to me. Now, the bulk of this packet is the budget book, which everyone has seen at least three or four times now. So that should not have been a barrier to reviewing the rest of the packet. Now, I will say, the, the reason I thought this was not going to be a big deal is because we did Black History Month, we did Women's History Month, we did a Memorial Day, this is Pride Month, and Juneteenth happened.
It doesn't matter.
So I just, we were just tick, 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 ticking along.
No, no, it's not tick, tick, tick. It doesn't mean that just because we think that there's something that's going on and that we need to tag ourselves onto, just because we think, oh, this is this month, so now we're gonna pick up and add this to our agenda or our proclamations. It doesn't, that's not the way it works. So is it, is that a need? Is this something that our town wants to focus on? You need to, that needs to be a consideration, not just because, oh, it's Black History Month. That should have been done. But I mean, but, but with that being said, some of these things are just coming up, and you decide that all of a sudden you want to have them on the agenda, and then, and put them into proclamation, and give a proclamation on it, but we haven't had a chance to discuss it. So I don't understand why there is a rush to, to push a proclamation when we have so many other important things to discuss. We, I, I just don't understand what that fight is about, when we're asking for more time. And just because you say that we have had an opportunity to comment on that, that's through our text messages. We are not discussing, we are not discussing, so you get that one comment. So you are getting comments based on just a consensus, not just, you know, a full discussion on these proclamations. So I want to.
I think at the town, we're trying to be inclusive and.
Well, that's your input, but we have more input that could be discussed.
To not discuss it, I mean.
But, but we're not ready to discuss it, and I need to be able to look into this and then have a discussion.
I don't understand what the big, what the big deal is. It, it already passed. Why we just can't have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand what the big deal is.
Well, because you're holding it back, Sarah, from even Mayor, from moving on, and, and the wish is, can we table this until we just can discuss? And you're still discussing.
Well, I'm. But I've asked for a date. I've asked for a date that we're gonna discuss it on, because I'm responsible for preparing.
Well, Sarah did ask, can, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lot did ask a question about that. So she already asked a question about that, and that has not been answered yet.
So that's what we're discussing, really, is why we're just.
Can we just get an answer on it, like?
So I don't, I'm not comfortable tabling it indefinitely. I don't know if everyone.
We didn't say indefinitely. Where did you get that?
You said that.
Station. No one said indefinitely.
You did.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Okay, 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 hold on.
There was.
Hold on.
There, there, there was a comment about why do we need to attach a date to when we have.
That is true.
I'm sorry?
Okay, hold on, because I'm gonna have to have John.
Wait, we haven't even decided when we're gonna, okay, let me, let me just say, in all fairness, we have, we always say, let's talk about it on, let's put it on the next meeting. Let's talk about a day we can have this discussion. Let's talk about that first, and then, you know, then we can put it back. But then, but let's have the conversation first. Let's come up with that date first. Let's, let's just be open and honest, and let's just have that conversation, and then we move on to, okay, now we can put this back on the agenda, and now we can probably get input from the town.
So we can't, we can't discuss it, we have to discuss it at a public meeting. So that's, that's what I'm asking for.
But that's all.
Right now, is what, what date are we going to discuss this? And our next meeting is July 12, that is a work session meeting, which is meant for discussions. So I was asking if you would attach a date to your motion. Obviously, you can make a motion without a date, but I'm not gonna be comfortable voting for a motion without a date. Is what I'm saying.
Understood, understood. Well, I mean, I don't see why not. If, if it has to be a public conversation, then, I mean, do what we have to do.
So can I, can I get a motion that has a date in it, so we can vote on it?
When the, the 12th is the next work session, and then after that.
So what's the next meeting after the 12th? The meeting is July 26. Those are our next two meetings.
I think that's fair.
July 20.
Six, this is our next.
Yeah.
That's fair.
Sorry, can you make the motion so that John can record it?
I motion that we table the Pride, well, Pride and Juneteenth proclamations until the next meeting of June 26.
A second.
Is there a second? Okay.
Discussion before I vote. Are we gonna discuss it on the 26th, or approve it on the 26th?
Discuss it.
No, discussion's on the 12th.
No, discussion's on the 26th.
On the 26th.
So normally, we discuss in our work session.
We, we can make a date, Sarah, you just said we can have a date. Now you're concerned that it's not on the date that you want.
We said. I just, you're saying you don't want to have the discussion now, because, well, I guess we can have.
Well, but we're not prepared, we asked for a discussion, a discussion, it is, is a discussion. The 26, please.
Okay, and then when, when are you thinking we would approve it?
We need a discussion, Sarah.
How is this not a discussion right now?
I think we should be able to come to, we should be able to have.
Okay.
A consensus of the minds, and then we can decide on a, on a, in vote. You know, I mean, you need to go through the process.
Yeah, I'm gonna call for a vote on this motion to table the proclamations until July 26. And that was made by Commissioner Duckett and seconded by Commissioner.
I think you still speak.
Right.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot, were you saying something?
Sorry.
I think she's still there.
I was just saying that, you know, if it comes up, we can go.
We're losing.
Yeah, we're losing you.
Still are voting.
Right, because we have to vote, we have to vote on it. So.
I thought we didn't have to vote on it once it came up and.
That's what I thought, too, but Kyle was checking the, the notes for us to make sure. That's his job, make sure we do everything right. So we have to vote to table it, especially given that there's differing opinions on it. We, we really need to vote, so.
Well, even, let me ask this question, the fact that it's been asked to be tabled, the vote does not mean that we're going to move forward today with this proclamation, or any proclamation.
Depending on what happens to the motion and what other motions get put forward. I will tell you, I would be comfortable voting on a table motion based on your input for the 12th, but not on the 26th, so I don't know if you want to change your motion based on that. But.
Why, what's the, why, yeah, what's the difference today? Problem with the date?
Because there's only two days left in the month. It's June.
Well, so my, my reasoning, just because that was the question, was that the 12th is a work session meant for discussion. That would allow us to approve it on the 26th. If we don't discuss it until the 26th, we're not approving it until August.
We're already tied of.
I realize we're already late.
I just don't understand. What's the push? So what's the push?
I, I think residents will be upset that we haven't done these proclamations, and I.
Can you repeat that? Who would be upset?
I think residents will be upset.
Oh, no, I don't think, I mean, how are residents upset? I don't know.
Have to vote on it, too? Don't we gonna, we're gonna stick public.
John, I'm just gonna call for the vote, so.
How are you speaking for all residents?
I'm not speaking for all residents.
So you just said residents will be upset. So how are you speaking?
We're not approving a Juneteenth proclamation or a Pride proclamation.
Yeah, that's not what, I'm just asking you, how are you saying that all residents will be upset?
I think it, no, I mean, I'm not saying all residents. I'm saying, I think that the base on the residents that I speak with.
Well, that, well, you're not the only person speaking with residents.
Absolutely right, I am not. So, so all I'm telling, I'm gonna call for-
Just call for the vote, please.
I'm calling for the vote. John, can you do the roll call vote?
So the motion, just so everyone is very clear, is that the, you would like to table this and have it discussed at the twenty-sixth, July twenty-sixth meeting. For the vote would then happen in August.
I, I think that second part is not part of the motion, just tabling it to a twenty-sixth discussion is the-
Is the motion, and it was, it was motioned by Commissioner Duckett, seconded by Commissioner Lot. Now we're taking the vote. Commissioner Culver, how do you vote? Mr. Duckett, how do you vote?
Yay.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Hatchet, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Lot, how do you vote?
Yay.
The motion does not pass. It has three nays and two yays.
So, I will ask, is there a motion to table this discussion to July twelfth?
What's the difference? Yeah, now that you pushed, what's the difference? You're just pushing this to get what you want. So what's the difference?
Yeah, I won't sign it.
Okay, hold on, guys, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on. I won't sign it. I am not pushing this to get what-
Oh, you pushing it? Yes, you are, because you didn't- I am not discussing anything with any of us, so you are pushing your own agendas. You did not discuss it. Look, excuse me, Mr. Hatchet, you do not have my eyes. You, you do not know what I saw and I said, discuss. Reading something does not mean you had it.
We voted on the discussion. We voted.
I don't know what voting you were doing, sir.
Okay, okay, guys. Here's the deal. Work sessions are for discussion. Meetings are generally for passing. So, so what I'm saying is, we didn't have a work session, so we didn't discuss this, right? So I'm, I am comfortable, I am comfortable discussing.
Just about that mayor stating, we did not discuss this. Thank you for being honestly honest about it.
I mean, I assumed based on all the other proclamations we made, we could just keep going forward, making-
Well, you can't assume anything. I would think that you would know.
We voted on it.
You did. Excuse me.
Okay, hang on, hang on, guys.
Previous mayor, how can you now say you can just assume something? You're doing the same thing.
That is completely unfair.
Well, I think, I think, I think we have, we, we, we've gotten to the point where motions have been made. We voted on the motions. The motion has failed. If there is a change in the motion, someone should make that. If there's, if there's still a desire to have a date, there's someone-
I'm motion that we table this discussion until the twelfth of Pride and Juneteenth Proclamations.
Well, three out of two said they don't want that.
It's a different motion.
I'm sorry.
So she's moving to the, she's making the motion to move it to the twelfth. Is there a second?
A second.
John, can you take us through the vote?
Will do. Commissioner Culver, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Duckett, how do you vote?
Yay.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Yay.
Mr. Hatchet, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay, motion, motion passes and we will discuss these two proclamations. On the-
A lot's vote.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Lot, how do you vote?
Yay.
Okay, very well, the motion carries.
Motion carries and we will discuss these two proclamations and, um, you know, issuing them retroactively and July twelfth. Okay, let's move on to reports. Um, we have Public Safety, Public Works Finance. Um, does anyone have questions for Chief Burse, Director Bond, or Administrator Snyder based on their reports? Hearing none, we will move on to the Greenwell insulting report. Is, are they here? Sorry.
I don't see.
They're not, no. Um, I just know they're working on a couple items, including getting us our, uh, grant reimbursement from the Pocket Park Purchase, the two, uh, the twenty thousand dollars from the state as well as, um, preparing to draw down our bond bill for two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Clifford project. That, uh, that should come into effect July first with the state budget. So, um, they're actively working on that.
Do you know if they heard anything about the mosquito spring?
They have not. Um, I think at this point, it's going to be a, um, rally the troops and, um, make a push for next year to ensure that there's equity, um, in the next spring schedule.
Okay.
Um, cuz we are coming up on the, then we haven't heard any updates from-
Yeah. Okay. Okay, um, so we will move on to the Historical Committee Report.
Okay, sorry. Uh, so on June eleventh, we had a, we had, we had a meeting because we wouldn't be able to do our normal archive meeting because of the memories and morsels. And a lot of that was planning for the, um, for the memories and morsels, but most of it was, uh, going around and assigning, uh, different tasks for the October first event. Um, I still have not been given or no one, that, no one, the, um, events. Snyder has not contacted us or showed up to any of our meetings. I don't know if I should be working with her or if I've got the ball and I'm to run with it. So if anybody can give our, our, our committee some guidance, uh, it would be helpful because otherwise we're just gonna run with what we wanna do.
Um, Kyle and I can work on, um, figuring that out and getting, cuz we have the, uh, that sheet that I came and filled out with y'all. So we can-
We also have the, you know, the actual, uh, I sent that over to John and I guess you got a copy as well of how we want the events to do and the timeline for which we wanted to do it. Um, there was some discussion, um, about trucks, some, uh, someone in the town had suggested we extend it out beyond the original map that I had supplied. Um, I really don't and I'm not comfortable changing what we had originally planned. Especially as, as we're, we're encroaching the date. Um, and we've gotten no support, very little support from the town, uh, for whether or not we have uh, S H A support for getting those, uh, those signs up. And, uh, and for the funding for the things that we're gonna be doing. So I, I, I mean, the town said they were gonna fund it, but that included a lot of things that, um, we thought the town was going to move forward with so that we would get county support instead of having to pay for it ourselves. Because if we pay for everything, I think you remember, the cost was like over eight or nine thousand dollars. Um, with the support of the, of the county, it was like thirty-five hundred to four thousand, so it was less than half the price uh, of, of the original price. Um, I just really feel like the town should get engaged in this or we're just gonna run with what the Historical Committee wants to do and we'll just start sending you receipts.
Um, so it is a town event, um, so please don't send, just send receipts cuz they might get reimbursed. They have to be approved through, um, the town administrator.
Wasn't it already approved in the budget?
So, so in order to balance the budget, we had to cut all the committees and events by ten percent. So that had to be done and now I am kind of looking through everything and trying to figure out. I've also met personally and Director Bond, and I have met with S H A to discuss the event. Um, and they are working on how they can close the roads, um, uh, and-
So is the town now taking this over? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, it's a partnership, the same way Marlboro Day is a partnership between the town and, um, the Events Committee. So they have to submit, if they're gonna spend money, they have to run it through the town, submit receipts.
I did all of that with my budget that I sup- that I supplied you. And based on that, I should be able to start moving forward.
But the, but, right, so we approved the budget, but we didn't, we cut the budget. We cut all-
Then was that cut?
So, uh, I would say, I wanna say that we made those cuts in May. Is that right, Kyle?
I, I, I'm, I'm just thinking that the Historical Committee might have been notified if our budget had been cut after our original budget submission had been approved.
So every, all the committees are, we are going to work on notifying all the committees of what budget levels were approved for all of them.
Running out of months, Sarah. I'm running out of months and I'm finding out my budget just got cut. I'm running out of months.
Well, there's only so much money.
Down. This is not because of our committee not wanting to move forward. We're doing the planning. We've been doing the planning since April.
Right, and I came to your meeting and we went through the, the information and my dog is upset. Um, and so now we have the new budget from the approval that the committee did, commission did, um, the Board of Commissioners, and it has to be looked at again.
It's June, it's the end of June, it's July. This is gonna be in three months. You're just now looking at a budget for something that's gonna happen October first that could include someone like Governor Hogan. And you're just now looking at the budget after it was submitted in March. The budget was submitted in March.
So Governor Hogan has not replied to say he can. We asked him to come in, I wanna say February, or it might have been March. Um, and he has not replied to say that he's coming. Uh, S H A is sending like a fourth-in-command person. Um, so we are not getting, you know, our contacts are not coming to this as, to the extent that the Historic Committee was hoping for. Um, now I have been working on the budget and working on the numbers. Now that the numbers are there, we are preparing to send each committee a letter explaining to them what amount of budget was approved for them. And we will work with you on this. Um, we typically plan Marlboro Day in about three months. Um, we have some advanced planning and advanced conversations going on about this event. So, um, this event is, is ahead of kind of the schedule for our planning large events and we are going to be focusing on it, so.
Just, just a, a quick note also, the, the cuts themselves were, or the iterations of the cuts were discussed at least at the May town meeting and I believe also at the May work session that, that cuts across the board were happening.
All right, is there anything else on the Historic Committee Report?
I, I, I'm just gonna hold off on doing anything until the town decides what they need to, the Historical Committee to do. Because obviously I can't do anything if I don't even have a budget. So you all figure your, whatever you're doing. And hopefully the town will be able to recover for an October first event that I've been planning since January.
Okay, do you have a lot of R S V Ps you can send to us so we know how many people are coming from other historic committees? If you can do that, um, and then-
The invitations have, the invitations are going out this week.
Okay, well then that will help us know what scale too. Uh, but, but we will be working on it. It is on our list, so. All right, we're gonna move on to the Events Committee. Um, Commissioner Lot has taken the Events Committee so she can tell us what happened.
All right, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, last meeting, we, it was pretty brief. We discussed, uh, possibly moving in the Christmas tree lighting. Uh, moving it, uh, I guess to Friday so that we can begin the Christmas weekend. Uh, the Christmas, uh, weekend on Main Street. So we're, we're planning on having another meeting, um, I would say in August, beginning of August to, uh, just bring all of the, uh, the ideas we have and, and to, to put, start putting things in place. So right now, that's the only thing we, we discussed and we have another meeting coming up next month. Uh, the first, I guess it's the first Thursday of July, so I'll be there as well to, um, to continue to, to bring ideas and-
Oh, you're gone again. Can anyone else hear Commissioner Lot?
Can you hear me?
Now we can hear you.
Okay, so basically, we, we briefly discussed the Christmas tree lighting and started it on Friday at the beginning of the program, which would, uh, just, um, cover the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We're gonna end it on a Sunday. And we're gonna have another meeting in August to bring all the ideas together. Linda gave, uh, wonderful ideas. Uh, so did Patty, um, and, uh, two other people that I've been speaking with. I can't remember their names at this time. But, um, yeah, so we're gonna, uh, just have another meeting to bring things together and we'll have another report coming up.
Okay, any questions, guys? All right, um, we will move on to Sustainable Communities.
I went out again.
Oh, did you have more to say or you're good?
No, I, no, cuz I didn't know cuz I heard you.
There weren't any questions, so we're good to move on to Evelyn.
Yeah, yes.
Hello, everyone. Uh, due to, uh, personal circumstances, uh, did not hold a, uh, meeting last week. Uh, and because of that, I'm asking, uh, I, I hope that I'm not gonna cause another thirty-minute discussion. But I'm asking to table the, uh, policies uh, so that the work group can discuss and, uh, expand on the draft that, uh, was sent to us, uh, Wednesday morning. Uh, also asking to table approval of the, uh, bylaws for the work group.
All right, I'll note those requests for when we get there.
Okay, thank you. Uh, other than that, uh, we're moving along with the, uh, applications we have. Uh, the state has, uh, approved funds, uh, for reimbursement for, um, David Herbert. Um, the other application that went in for fiscal year twenty-one, uh, they are having, uh, problems with getting the work done. Uh, the vendors are saying that they are not able to get to them. So we'll, we will be asking the state, can, they have approved the application and we'll, we'll be asking the state, uh, can we hold those F Y twenty-one monies for that, um, business and that's, um, Lidos. That's what's happening so far. That's all I have for right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Questions for Evelyn? Okay, so we will move on to the Arts Council Committee Report. Commissioner Duckett.
Good afternoon, everyone. We had the, um, arts pop-up yesterday, which, uh, was very nice. It was a very nice turnout. Um, we had dancers, Starlight Academy came to dance. Um, we had about eleven vendors that showed. Um, we gave out some free goodies as well. Um, we had some visitors from the town, just all over. So it was great support for the Arts Council. Um, we're also looking to do, of course, a follow-up, which would be a second annual, uh, Happy Leaf Arts Festival, and that's gonna be in September. We don't have a date just yet, but, um, it's coming. Um, everyone is very excited and we expect that this, uh, September Happy Leaf Festival will probably be uh, bigger than last year, of course, because, uh, now we've learned from the past and we can move forward with, um, a little bit more information, also additional vendors. And as we continue to move on, we continue to build our vendor ship list, which is very exciting. So, um, uh, we wanna thank, uh, Chief for the- we want to thank Chief for the police support that Sergeant Brooks, I believe, that was there. So I want to thank you for his support for looking out and making sure that we were all safe. And the any, you know, and all the support that we received just in the community. Some of the folks that showed up. So it was just a very successful day and we look forward to trying to do something like that in the future again. So yeah, that was it. So that was, that happened actually on Sunday. So take lookout for upcoming information about the Happy Leaf Festival in September. And that's it.
Okay, yeah, I had them for October, I thought. So let me know when there's that, let us know when there's that date so we can work the staffing around it. Or, because that's, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. All right, any questions on arts? Okay, we'll move on to the Green Team Committee Report. Commissioner Handchuk.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to commend everybody on the Garden Committee. It's been a great month. We met a couple times at the garden. I don't remember if it was the exact night of our usual meeting. There's been a lot of conflict with people's availability and all that. But we were able to do chicken wire around the whole perimeter. Everybody did a great job with that. Our corn is doing really well. It's thriving, I think unbelievably, but that's some other stuff going on too with, we caged off the melons and all that. We're trying to keep the animals away. So we're doing, making progress on that. And a lot of deterrence. We did some soap and garlic and some different I would say homemade remedies or whatnot, which I think is a good thing. We also added a picnic table to the area. And we finally finished the path to go down the middle that's covered with mulch. And it's a really nice area to sit and hang out and learn from the master gardeners that are there, which I know Sarah is one of them and Darlin. So anybody that wants to come down, please feel free to come down and check with us on the availability for when we'll be down there and look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we will move on to the Cert Report. Chief Burris.
So yes, for the month of May, Cert had a total of 89 hours for volunteer and meetings and some training, and that's it. And they met the second Saturday of the month.
Thank you. Questions on Cert? All right, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. So in the last month, I guess technically we're supposed to be talking about May, but we've, we've produced a budget book that we're going to be looking at tonight. And we've been having branding discussions with county officials to see where they can assist us. Attended MML with the rest of the board and really the classes really provided a lot of excellent information. Held a community conversation on the first Saturday and we had, I want to say, three residents come out and they were different residents than usual. So it was great to hear what their opinions and thoughts were. And then kind of been attending the town events. I missed the Arts Council because I was giving Greg Franklin so much needed attention. But I hear it was fun and I I was jealous that I wasn't there. So. All right, Commissioner Colbert?
No update.
Oh, you're cutting, are you cutting out?
Yeah, he's cutting out.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, no.
Am I still there? I was just saying, no update from me at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Duckett? Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm you.
You highlighted a little bit of it already, mentioning that we all attended MML. So I want to say that it was a great experience being able to attend MML. It provided a lot of information and insight in how to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and supporting decisions that we make in the town and how we make those decisions and just governance all over. So I think it was a great opportunity and I look forward to learning more from MML. It's a great resource for us. And I'm just glad that I was able to attend. Also, some of the branding did have some conversations surrounding how we can make, I would say, this town shine a little bit and how we can bring more revenue to the town and what that branding will look like. So I'm excited about a conversation about that and hoping that we can move that forward and get the support, the revenue to make those things happen. And then just ongoing meetings with the council, just Arts Council, just to make sure that we can continue to bring lively arts displays and activities here to the town of Upper Marlboro. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Handchuk?
Yes, I would just like to commend John for conference well organized and MML conference was a valuable learning experience. It was nice to bond with my fellow commissioners and it was a great learning experience. It was just a positive thing and I look forward to taking in what I learned there and working to help the town run more effectively. And that's it. Oh, another thing too, that I want to commend the Historical Committee for a great outing that they did. I was able to join for a little bit down on Main Street and I just want to say a job well done. Thank you.
Commissioner Lot?
I just want to say that I, I too would agree to say thank you to John for putting everything together and there was a wealth of knowledge at MML and I was grateful to have attended and hopefully can continue to learn more about municipalities and and how we can move the town forward. Thank you.
Okay. So we will move on to our business agenda. And we are going to start off with Resolution 2022-12, Setting Service Fees. This is an introduction. The air, I'm going to have the Commissioner, Commissioner, I'm going to have Administrator Snyder take us through his memo on this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So from time to time, the board sets fees via resolutions to different things from from notary to parking passes to police reports and Freedom of Information or Maryland Public Information Act requests, staff hours and stuff like that. So the last time this was done was back in 2019. So every couple of years, we look to refresh it. One of the big things is and changes that you can see on the screen is the addition of a vendor fee of $100. It was $50 in a passed resolution establishing Marble Day. So after seeing the popularity event, the amount of vendors that want to come out and the expense with events to offset that, staff recommending bringing that up to $100, which has been reasonable. Our events coordinator did some digging and looked at that. Another thing is changing the Church Street Parking Lot Permit to just a regular plain parking permit to allow us to formally sell the passes on Governor and Blue Drive. Kind of been getting passed on a technicality. But now we'd like to just codify it a little bit and keep it going because we are seeing park passes being sold into the fall now as we wait for updates from the county on the status of the parking garage. And then another one is remove our reproductions for putting items onto compact discs. $20 per disc. That's just obsolete. We haven't done that in years and now we just email everything or Dropbox. However, that one line, the police report was added back in, police slash accident report was added back in at the request of Chief Burris. And then adjusting the food truck permit from $200 a day to the 75 to reflect the county law that was passed. It's $75 per day permit. Is that what we cannot exceed? So it could be passed today, but it's going up for introduction, introduction, I understand. So it'll be passed in in July.
I just had one question that we kind of talked about, but I wanted to bring up to the board is the permit parking is $40 a month. And so every, every month, they have to renew their permit parking and they're coming in. And Ms. Lucy is, you know, getting it from her desk and printing out permits and Kyle is getting up and doing stuff with them as well. So I was going to float the idea of us including a quarterly parking permit and making it $100 because that's a discount. It's $20 less than paying per month. But if they do quarterly, that's less staff time dedicated to the permits. If anyone else has questions, discussion, etc.
I I agree with the quarterly option. I actually was thinking myself of an annual option. I don't know if anyone actually used them on on that level. But yeah, I think something with a less frequent renewal period would probably be good.
Go ahead, Kyle.
I was going to say, in regards to parking permits, we're working with IPS, our parking vendor, they do offer parking permits built in their system with tag numbers. So we're also looking into that as well. So that could be an option that comes for the board separately. For also Main Street, like if attorney wants to buy a parking pass for $200 a month or something to park in front of the courthouse, we do the math and it makes sense.
And then we would update this because Main Street would be a different price than Governor Oden.
Exactly, or be a completely different resolution. Yeah.
Okay.
How many, how many parking passes are we seeing monthly? How many requests for parking passes?
I'd say 15 to 20, just off the top of my head. Some try and sneak by and code officer Vicky catches them trying to reuse old parking passes and whatnot. But yeah, I'd say we have probably about 15 to 20 active per month. The county is getting a bit more creative, parking some people in some weird spots off the street. But so we've seen kind of a decrease and they've actually eliminated a contractor group at the building. So both average 15 to 20 that we didn't really button for that income.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want us to add an annual option for like 400 or, you know, 375 or just?
Let me just ask if we do a quarterly budget now, what, how do we know that? I mean, just want to make sure that is convenient still yet for someone paying it on a quarterly basis, just thinking of someone's budget. And, you know, those things, is it going to be convenient for someone to pay that on a quarterly basis?
We have people now paying for three months, paying 120 for three months.
The option.
Yeah, we would.
Okay.
And we would love for people, more people, we have people coming in every month and we're printing a parking pass every month. So this is who's able to offer, hey, we have a quarterly, it's slightly discounted. We may have some people jump at that.
Yeah, and that's good. I mean, I did get some great feedback just over the weekend about that and some folks saying thank you for those passes and that we offer that. So, yeah, they're appreciative of it.
No one's objecting to a quarterly at 100. Does someone want it, did you want just to annual at 400 or annual at 375? So they're getting more off or?
I would say however we can work it in, the provider discount will probably be best, especially in this economy.
Can I just make a statement? I think we should either stick with the monthly or quarterly. If you do the annually, because not everybody is there all the time. Some of the contractors have been cut and this is because I've been personally in contact with some of the people. That's another reason why there was a decrease. So some people are paying monthly because they're not sure if they're going to be there the next month. And some people who thought they were there oh, want to be there, they were sent home. So then we're going to have to be offering refunds of a couple hundred dollars. So we're not, I don't think we're prepared to be shelling out refunds for a year.
Yeah.
Thank you for providing that wisdom.
Thank you.
It was a good idea, Commissioner Colbert, is I don't think, because they're kind of fluctuating back and forth over there.
No, no, I get it. That's why I was, I was just kind of wondering what the, if there would be any usage or need for an annual option. But appreciate that context.
Are there any other comments on this? Questions? It's listed on the agenda as introduction or my agenda. So I think we have to bring it back up on the 26th. All right, so we'll move on to, oh, sorry.
You have residents to speak.
You're right. Thank you, John.
I have Addie Calacot.
Yeah, I just wanted to, what is the police report, accident report? What is that?
That's just if someone wants a physical copy of their police or accident report, they can come to Town Hall, we print them off a copy. It's $10.
Oh, okay.
The county charges.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was like, Chief Burris puts our report out every month and I'm like, what? You're going to charge $10 for him? I mean, his words of wisdom are wonderful, but I don't think they're worth $10 a month for us to hear.
You're right. They're not worth 10. It's probably 50. What that is, it's it's actually, so if you get, if you get involved in an accident, the insurance company a lot of times has the owner to get a copy of the report. So they don't have to send an investigator or an adjuster out to do it. So a lot of times that information is sensitive. So in order to give it to one of the owners, there's a charge for an accounting charges $10. That's why it's it's in there. We were just mirroring what they were doing because we didn't want to be handling, if you saw on the, on my report, we had an uptick in accidents. We had eight last month, which is a little unusual. So that's just a standard form. Most municipalities charge for for accident report. That's it.
All right, sorry, because to me, I always thought as soon as the police came, they wrote a report and they gave you, they they held on to it and to give it to the insurance companies. But I don't have very many accidents, so I have no clue. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, John?
I have nobody else.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to.
I have to read the record for a moment.
You're right, John. What are you going to do with me?
The town of Upper Marlboro, Resolution 2022-12, session regular town meeting dated June 28, 2022, a resolution authorizing setting of fees for vehicle parking lot rates. For your request, notary, copy and permit services.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to Resolution 2022-13, Annexation Legal Services. As we move forward with annexations, the board is looking at bringing on a specialist who has expertise in annexation. And so we are looking at these two firm and individual. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Do we, Kyle, maybe you can clarify because it, we're doing a board approval, but I don't think we have a written annexation.
You, there's a written resolution. So pretty much the board could kind of approve staff to move forward with kind of drafting some stuff, getting a contract in place. Kind of approve staff to move forward with kind of drafting some stuff, getting a contract in place. Um, for these services or authorize the mayor to sign a contract. That amount. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the funding for this is coming out of the legal fund, existing legal fees.
Right, because our, those fees are the rate they're at for our current attorney to do annexation. But since our current attorney won't be doing the annexation, some of those fees will be shifted to the annexation. Attorney firm. Follow that. Um, okay. So the motion would need to be. A motion to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with whichever legal firm it is. And then there would be the resolution we would approve at the end of next month. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The resolution of potential contract, I guess, would be discussed at the work session.
Okay, so it won't be to sign it. It will be to move forward to get, okay. So the motion is actually authorizing town staff to move forward and securing a contract with X firm. Should I throw a motion out or does someone else want to throw one out? Okay. I will move that we authorize staff to move forward with a contract with Levon Ruff. For annexation, legal support. Is there a second?
Second.
Should we, I'm sorry, should we take public comment before we do the actual vote now that there's a motion on the floor?
Yeah, you take comment from.
We needed, I felt like we needed to make the motions that we were.
There needs to be something to comment on.
Right. Alright, so let's take public comment on this.
I have Patty Calacott.
Um, just wondering, was there an RFP for this?
Um, so this is a kind of specialized, I guess I should explain the process because it's. Is sort of a weird process. So it's sort of a specialized type of service that we're looking for. So what I actually did was contacted. All the lawyers who do municipal work in Prince George's County and any additional lawyers. Outside of the county that had annexation experience. Then they would, would either provide me whether they were available or not. Most of them were not available. Most of them recommended Levon Ruff to me when they were not available. And it came down to there were only two firms that were available and had the experience and. Could take on the work. So that is.
So there was no RFP, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
It's, um, it's being covered under the procurement ordinance. Section, part three, section D, professional services. Allows the board some flexibility when selecting specialized professional services. Put that section out there.
Is, is it in the budget? Was this, because this sounds all new and I don't recall seeing. This item in our previous budget or, and I'm not sure it was even in the current budget.
But as, as we discussed when we introduced it, it is covered under our legal services in the budget.
So it'd come out that line item, the board's anticipating going over that legal piece, legal services line item.
So we have another comment or another.
I have Evelyn Stevens.
Question, um, uh, just out of curiosity, what type of. Specialized legal services would you be asking of this Mr. Ruff?
Um, attorney.
Just an example.
So the attorneys Levon and Attorney Ruff would be asked to provide us assistance in drafting. Our annexation resolutions. Legal advice regarding our annexations. And ensuring that our annexations are tight and do not have legal loopholes in them.
Okay, so that leads me to another question in that, so we've had. Annexation phases one, two, and three. So you're saying that you are looking forward to. Annexate, annexation four, five, and six, for example, you're looking to continue to annex?
The, the town is looking to continue to annex. That's correct. We have many people asking to come into town.
Okay. That's it.
I'm not seeing other hands. Are you, John?
No other hands are raised.
Alright, um, so the motion on the floor, sorry, John, do you want to read the motion and then we'll vote?
So the motion is to advise town staff to prepare a contract with Levan Ruff LLC. With the rates that are seen on screen. I will go ahead and call the votes. Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Duckett, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lot, how do you vote?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Motion carry, alright. And we will move on to Resolution twenty-two-two dash fourteen to extend the declaration of emergency. And Kyle, you can just kind of explain what this does. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, um, so the mayor issued a proclamation earlier this month, setting some basic guidelines. To continue some safety practices, especially at town halls, such as like mask man wearing. By staff and the public during office hours, but then after hour meetings, of course, it's encouraged but not required to have masks on.
And yeah, that's all this does in town hall during business hours when staff are present. Requires masks and encourages them after hours for meetings and rentals.
And this would just extend it till September thirty.
Do commissioners have questions or comments? Is there public comment, John?
I do not see any hands raised at this time. I'll be happy to read it into the record if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
Very well. Resolution twenty-two-two dash fourteen, the town of Upper Marlboro, Maryland, joint declaration of a local state of emergency. Town emergency order number DOE twenty-two-two oh one and resolution number twenty-two-two dash fourteen. Of the town board of commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro extending the local state of emergency initially issued on June ninth, twenty-two.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash fourteen to extend the DOE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
I'll call the vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Duckett, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Henshaw, how do you vote?
You're on mute.
Sorry, aye.
And Commissioner Lot, how do you vote?
Aye.
Very well, motion passes. Thank you.
Alright, we will move on to item D, approval of town of Upper Marlboro FY twenty-two-three budget book. And Kyle, I will, I will let you introduce my baby.
Absolutely. Uh, so this is a months in the process making a budget book. Lots of thought and consideration have gotten put into this and information. And research and hopefully this is kind of like the first step and we just expand off of this year to year. And it won't be as much of a lift next year in getting this done. So pretty much even though the board's already approved. The town budget, this budget book is pretty much, the board is just approving the contents pretty much of this budget book. And it includes references to the approved ordinance. So beyond that, I, I don't think there's much more. The, the public has seen multiple drafts of this. Been posted on the website, comment, past couple of months. And hopefully it, it becomes a resource for residents who want to learn more about. What the town's spending money on, different revenue sources and whatnot. And it can, they can go to them first, then ask staff questions, the board questions as well, so.
Guys, this is very informative. Any public comment or question that was asked in a meeting is in the back of this book. There's a full section for it. So we hope, we hope that you find it useful. Do commissioners have any comments? Questions?
I just want to say, great job. It looks great. And thank you.
Do you have any, there is a public hand.
I do. I have a public comment from Joe Horley. One moment.
Joe. Marlboro Pike. I was wondering if the history section of the budget. Was run by the historical committee because there were a couple.
You're underwater.
Seem not right in it.
Okay, so the history section was written based on researching the.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
So I was wondering if the. Historical committee, that's the history.
Yeah.
I can hear you. So I was wondering if the history section accuracy is in it.
Yep, so the history section was written based on the information that is out on the, from the historical committee. And also some information from a book, what's that one called? I can't remember what it's called. It's in my office. Prince George's County history. So it was, it was primary sourced from historic committee information, so.
Okay, because I think there are some parts that can split Upper Marlboro with the town of Upper Marlboro because. Things like the, the motor, the car racing, was it Marlboro Racetrack Road, not the Equestrian Center? The Equestrian Center was not in town until a couple of years ago. So, you know, the town was not the host of the horse racing. You know, so it might be worth having someone on the historical committee actually review that. I also noticed a typo in existing conditions, last sentence, third line two. The town receives calls daily from residents outside the town limits. I assume that's supposed to be from, and I haven't gotten much further than that. So. That was it.
Alright. Thank you. Any other comments?
I don't see the other hands.
Is there a motion to approve the town of Upper Marlboro FY twenty-two-three budget book? Okay, is there another motion?
A second.
Oh, wait, is, is there a motion to approve the book?
So moved.
Okay, and then Commissioner Lot seconds?
Yeah.
I'll call the vote. Mr. Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Duckett, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Henshaw, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Lot, how do you vote? Mr. Lot?
Aye.
Yep.
Very well, the motion carries. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm having some issues here.
We hear you now. You were muted for a minute.
I know.
I think everyone's.
I was too.
I think I fixed it. I fixed it, guys.
Yes, we can hear you.
I will make an edit on the from. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, we will now move into Pocket Park Grant Application. Which is just going to be a discussion to provide Kyle with some guidance because he needs to get this application in. So very soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so yeah, just like the mayor said, we have the twenty-two. FY twenty-two-three, Community Parks Recreation Grant with DNR has opened. Everyone's aware, we've gotten three grants from this program so far for the playground. So now we're looking toward the newly purchased Pocket Park to get it developed as part of its grant. Pays their parties for like urban recreation opportunities. I guess they consider the downtown kind of urbanized. So we have some concepts. I have some pictures. It's kind of like. Different options for Pocket Parks that we've seen that staff's kind of looked at, such as like overhead lights. Some maybe vertical gardens, some public art. We are definitely thinking about some sort of hookups for food trucks and big benches for food trucks. Because that could be a good spot, because there's really.
Vertical garden sounds cool. Sorry.
Probably, yeah, it could be the, uh, the green team on that one. But yeah, just hookups for food trucks such as electricity and whatnot, which obviously they'd pay for in their. Food truck fee pass or anything like that. So just, so they're not running a generator while they're vending at that location. So I'm thinking about asking for a hundred and seventy-five thousand because it's kind of a smaller lot. But just want to get some thoughts on the board of what kind of, what would you like to see there as well as. Do we want, who do we want to kind of design the preliminary design? Of the park before we send it over to the application side of things. In the past, we've used Sparks at Play. They did the work before we even got the grant funding. They like preliminarily did the work for phase one and then we awarded them the phase one contract after the funding was approved. Is that something we want to do again? Did we want to do an RFP and look at some other firms? Those are kind of some of the questions I'm just throwing at you guys to get some guidance.
Um, this is Commissioner Duckett. I would definitely like to look at some other firms. Put an RFP out to see what, what the possibilities are, get some renderings going. I think, um, I mean, it's a great space and I think if it is, we'll definitely need to be able to draw the attention to it. So it can be used and also make it. You know, it's all accessible, but make the most use of the space. That's what I want to say. Make the most use of the space. Because parking is already very limited on the street, but you know, if someone wants to walk there, make sure that, you know. That if they're spending their time to go there to have lunch or it's just in the evening, I guess it's definitely going to be a great extension to the restaurants. That are already here if they just want to take their lunches, but. I think just making sure that it is versatile in the sense that we can use it maybe even for. Like a music type soft festivals and things of that nature we could have in that space. And, you know. Yeah, some things like that where, you know, the entire community could enjoy it even when.
Little band.
Yeah, band, even possibly a small movie night. So who knows, especially if it has a nice turf or, you know, things like that. So.
Yeah.
Just, just some of my thoughts.
I like the idea of the vertical garden, but also because that will free up space. If there could be vendors there and let's just say like a little string corquette or something like that. It, I don't know, I don't remember what the access is from behind if they're, if a food truck can get behind there or there's no.
It's private property back there. We'd most likely want them to park on Maine or Pratt Street right there in front.
Okay, so even if they have to park in town, we could put some seating there or, you know, like I look, I'm looking at this picture with the string lights. String between the two buildings. I really like that. Got that, you know, old. Old town lot, you know. You know, a little picnic area kind of thing. I like it.
Has there been? You mentioned this before, but has there been any thought about any artwork or murals or anything to be put up on the walls in between? Those two buildings. I don't know if it's.
We'd, uh, we'd have to obviously ask the property owners of those buildings are entered into an agreement. But, um, of course, we did discuss some sort of public art there, whether we want to look at maybe a statue. Because we, I mean, hopefully by then we'll have a couple of murals of the statue. And then obviously that wall. If John, if you can move that picture over to the street view.
Now, can we grade it?
That wall is just asking for artwork.
Yeah.
Could we grade it or bring it?
Yeah, I suspect it would have to be graded and then have some sort of. Like to the turf grass, have a lot, a strip of turf grass and some accessory structures on the outside. And then depending on how we grade it, we may have to have some steps. You can't see it here, but there's actually a sidewalk. Just to the left of that phone book or phone booth and the sidewalk goes to the back. That's the family justice center to the right.
Keep the payphone and it'll be a museum.
I actually had someone float a really cool idea about the payphone. If we could get permission to. Make it something you can pick up and hear like a recording about the history of the town.
That's awesome. I like that. That's really cool.
I don't know if that can go in your grant application because it's not ours, but.
That sounds amazing. Just a little brief history of the town. You can select one if you want to hear about. Select two.
And I was going to kind of tag on to Commissioner Culbert's comment about the murals. Because you had the vertical garden too. So like a mural that incorporates plants and then like in the mural would be really cool. That's my two cents.
I've seen cool hotels that have done that. It's amazing. They do succulents that are mixed with like ivy kind of things. So the contrasting color will make art, you know.
I have a question. What happened to those murals that, uh, the arts committee was working on and that we voted on?
Yeah.
With those local art that were very nice. Showed the like diverse community and blah, 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 blah.
The primary one got approved for funding. So we're just right now working with the state to get access to that funding. And the Arts Council moved that forward. We also are starting to work with the property owner for that. Even though they've preliminarily agreed to put the mural there, we just need that mural artwork agreement signed by them. So hopefully we can get this thing. We're hoping to get it painted before the show is kind of our.
Yeah, I also wanted to add, like when we, and thank you for that update out on it, which I, I knew that too. So, but thank you. So I just wanted to also input, like if we do think about. I know that putting out RFP will give us those great ideas from those folks that do these things for a living. But if we do think of some, maybe a garden of some sort. If we think about, we also need to think about the upkeep of that, the maintenance of that. I currently am in contact, well, with a garden that I could probably, you know. Use host for events every, it, it, um, but the gardening is an issue. So if we invest in gardening and putting out plants and things of that sort and trees. We need to think about the future and how we're going to be able to maintain that and where that, that money, that funding come from to do that. So if we become too extravagant, it could become. You know, more of a pain point than.
You're right.
So this is something to think about.
You're right. To put that on Darnell would be a lie. Yeah, I didn't think about that. So garden club, here we come.
Uh, there is one other kind of thing I want to make sure we're considering in the planning, which is safety, especially at night. So with the bushes there, I know that they cut them down, so they're shorter, but it still kind of creates a dark kind of hidden space. So I think when, when we're planning, we need to keep in mind that this area doesn't have a lot of eyes on it in the evening. And we don't want it to become an unsafe place. And that can go into the design with like lighting, probably a safety box. But also not having kind of corners and recesses where you can hide.
Really with you mentioning that. It does a good point. I think that we may even, I mean, in that entire rendering and what we see. We may even give them an idea of these very nice intricate gates that already lock the place in the evening. So there's just not someone that can, you know, if it's, it's open at a certain time and after this time is closed and locked and no one has access to it. So I think that might be a nice option to do it. And the, you know, the gates can be nice and full of grandeur and whatever the case is. But something that just makes it look like even something with art on it. I, you know, I don't know. We're just imagining. So just something that says, yeah, no trespassing after dark and, and we have that, you know, protected. So.
Park hours.
You reminded me of these really pretty like gate panels and like fence panels in Wheaton. I don't know if you guys have seen it, like going by towards Wheaton Regional. They just like have a playground, kind of like what you were saying. It's gated so they can close it off. But the gate and the fence are like these panels that have cutouts in their art and they're really beautiful.
All right, I think I got some good options. We'll probably end up doing. We'll do the application for the grant without any renderings. It's not required to have rendering. Sometimes it helps. But I think we can just do some, based off what I have, I'll just put like a vision board together to submit or for the board to see and submit. To the state and go with any progress from there. And then as we kind of see the grant progress through the State House during the, the. Twenty twenty-three session, if it looks to be favorable, we can go ahead and release an RFP in the spring. So that by, hopefully by July first, we have a design firm selected, if not pretty much underway to get that lot developed.
Can you repeat the timeline?
Sure. So the grants do in August. So based off this feedback, I'll, um, I'll work on getting a grant application together. And we may be able to get it out to the board ahead of time. But it's pretty much, I'll just take all the feedback I got tonight and incorporate that into the narrative and convey that to the state. And then as we just track it going through the state process, because the state gets it in August and then they put a budget together. And it goes before the General Assembly for approval at the, um, the January twenty twenty-three legislative session on the state. So once it gets approved, that package is approved. Then we can go ahead and we know the funding's coming and we can move forward selecting contractors before the July first date with the funding. July first, twenty twenty-three is when the funding for this will actually be.
So I'm just going to ask you, can we just, like, you'll have the grant application together and we can approve it on the twenty-sixth?
I think, yeah.
Yep.
Is everyone good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Um, is there any public comment? All right. So we will move on to committee bylaws, which is an approval and it's a little overdue. We reviewed these in March. And we then got tied up in the budget and didn't actually approve them. So I'm just going to, because I've been kind of compiling these. So I'm going to step on Kyle's toes a little bit and kind of let you know where everything's at. With regard to the bylaws that we're actually approving tonight. When we reviewed the bylaws, we then. Sent letters to the Sustainable Communities Working Group, the Historic Committee and the. Events Committee, just requesting that they review certain sections. And the Historic Committee's bylaws are already approved. They did not send us any changes, so we don't really have anything to approve there, but that information is in your packet. The Sustainable Communities Working Group did not provide us any updates based on our input. So. My recommendation is that we approve the green team and the Events Committee bylaws. And so the Events Committee made an additional change from the ones that we recommended and they adopted. The green team has voting members instead of like a chairperson, a vice chair. And the green team and the Events Committee decided to adopt that as well. So instead of having chairpeople, they are going to have three voting members. So that's the only additional change to theirs. Because I've been kind of like working with these and reviewing them. And Kyle, do you have anything to add to that?
I think you covered it.
You guys have questions, comments, thoughts? No, Commissioner Culbert, I'm not sure if you were here when we reviewed them initially. So I don't know.
No, I wasn't. I was going to say, I'm, I'm, I was going to make the suggestion that you did that. The Events Committee and the Green Team, not been reviewed, changes accepted, move forward with those and then hold off CWG. Since we've also risked comment on that.
Right.
I've reviewed and I'm comfortable. Thank you.
Hey, why didn't you throw this away?
Commissioner Lot, you're, you're not muted. Sorry. All right, so let's take public comment and. Then we can go. Okay.
I'm sorry, when was all of this sent out? What, what, you said that you said?
Oh, did I date these? I did not date these letters.
Because I don't, I don't remember getting anything. And that's why I was just going through my email. And I don't remember seeing any, any.
Okay, so I didn't actually send them out myself, but the bylaws were discussed, I believe. They would have been discussed in February if Commissioner Culbert wasn't with us, I think. And so, oh yeah, that's what it says in my letter. So everything was discussed in February and then these letters were sent out probably in March.
And did they go to the historic at uppermarlboroMD.gov?
So I can ask Administrator Snyder to look into that tomorrow. We're not going to be voting on the Historic Committee ones this evening though. So we can, you know, he can look into that and get back to us.
Yeah, because I would, if I, I, if, if you're looking for input and changes, I'd really like to bring this before our, our committee. To review and see if there are updates, but I don't remember seeing this. So I, I apologize if I missed it.
That's okay. Kyle will look into that and we'll get with you tomorrow, but we're not voting on yours today. So we'll just. We'll be good for that for now. Okay.
I'm having trouble on meeting. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
So I, I think that your discussion with Patty confirmed my question that you're not voting. Today on the SCWG. Comments that you have. So that's fine. And allowing us to have a group meeting. And make comments after the group meeting.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there more comments?
No, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve the Green Team and Events Committee bylaws?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Lot, second. Very well. I will call the vote. Mr. Culbert.
Aye.
Duckett, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Lot, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We will move on to the policies and I will. Entertain motions table. I did send these out at the beginning of the month because we weren't having the work session and hopes comments could print in. But if folks don't feel they've had adequate time to review these and want to discuss them at the work session, we can do that. And I'll probably just send you guys out the revised like summer planning if we do that. Do, do you want to ta, does anyone want to table them or should I kind of go through them? Okay, Kyle, you want to?
Yep. Um, so the events policy. Pretty much provides a review on the conducting of events within the town limits, how they're done and put together. So it's that pretty much ask all committees, submit their planned events by the thirty-first of November for the year prior. So for the twenty twenty-three calendar year events, we'd be asking the committees to kind of look through their normal events, nail down the dates. So that we can put together an annual events calendar that we're able to pass out all the events, all the residents know. Starting from January first, when all the events are happening throughout the calendar year to keep that consistent.
Am I able to make?
I'm sorry?
I was, I wonder if they're going to make comment.
Yeah.
What about some of these committees showing that they're trying to make money on their own? I'm not trying to make an argument or anything, but you know, I hear comments that committees want money from the town. Why not show what you're making or what you're trying to bring in? And that's just a comment I'm making and I don't want to. Get into it right now, but I, I think it's something to think about. I mean, I think all the committees should be thinking about fundraising. Instead of counting on the town. And I want to leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The policy also pretty much establishes some dates for the set large scale events, marble day, trunk or treat, holiday lighting and differentiates. Like committee or large events versus like smaller towns, like ribbon cuttings, groundbreaking stuff that the town staff are holding. It breaks that up. It also sets the official rain date for an event. As one week following unless otherwise noted. And determination of when weather cancellations will be made. And at what point do we need to cancel events based on weather cancellations? And also sets on some guidance on following town permits for events not sponsored by the town. Sort of not being held by like a town committee or the town itself. I'm just making sure they follow the special events ordinance. Which needs to be submitted fifteen days prior to the event. Special events ordinance was passed back in twenty eighteen, requires a permit for all road closures within the town limits. And just gives us a heads up so that we can respond to those and kind of prepare for those as well if anything's needed. And also just requires like for all the other events, the town sponsored events. It allows the event form, request form to come in from either the committee or if it's a town. Then through the town staff, just so that we know what town resources are needed. About thirty days out, we can work with the department heads of parking planning and stuff like that. To make sure those are put in.
I think it's the, the, it's also referring to the like ones that come from outside because they have to give us time to acquire permits. Well, and really anytime we have to close roads, we have to acquire permits unless they're town roads, but we still need to have staff support for those. Comments, questions?
I have Patty Callicott. You ready?
Yes, thank you.
I, I take issue at Commissioner Hanchett's request or. Discussion regarding having these committees that were developed by the town for the town. To begin earning our own money. I tried for our historical committee, the thought of selling T-shirts. And immediately was told that the T-shirts. and immediately was told that the T-shirts would be given away. And if my budget allowed me to buy T-shirts, then my budget should allow me to sell them as opposed to giving them away, which I had to then increase my budget by $800 to give away T-shirts. So because these committees are requested by the town to be created, and they are run by volunteers, I really take issue at someone telling us to go out and fundraise.
I apologize.
That's all I needed to say.
Okay, I just, hold on. I just want to clarify, Patty. I would like to know who told you you could not sell those shirts?
You. You were the one that said, yes, at our meeting, you specifically said we were giving the T-shirts away to the staff and to the people. Yes, Sarah, it was you, the only day you came to the meeting, and that's when I said I had to change the budget.
You may have misunderstood.
Oh, I did not misunderstand, Sarah. You said we were giving the T-shirts away, which is why I increased the budget. Because otherwise, if I sold them, I was going to make the T-shirts on this current budget and sell them.
Yeah, I might have said you had to give them to staff.
Sarah, you told me.
I'm not going to fight with you on he, she said.
I have my minute, Sarah, so.
Yep, thank you.
I would like to say, I don't think that, I mean, I've heard this before. I think that we should definitely support the committees that are working on behalf of the town to make our town flourish and look good, and provide us with opportunities. And when I say opportunities, family, community, opportunities, things that will draw attention to others from outside to come in and spend money here in the town. So, yes, we should be making sure that we're able to support on many levels, as I'm sure that we do in some. I know that for, you know, I see that with the Arts Council and things, so we should be able to, and we do need to be able to continue to support these committees, because without the committees, I mean, we are nothing, of course. And we value and appreciate all the hard work that you do, and all that you put into your efforts to continue to help our town. So trust me, Patty, we are very appreciative, and we know of all the hard work that you do with the Historical Committee, and we are appreciative of that, and I'm also appreciative for all the other committees that have stepped up. And I know it can be tiring, and it's a commitment. It's a real commitment, so that means your heart is in it, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Janice.
I also.
I'm not in disagreement. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I mean, I think, you know, we did have to cut all the committee budgets by 10% to make the budget work this year, so I think all the committees will need creative ways, and I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding about selling T-shirts, but there is no problem with selling T-shirts. And we have another resident comment.
Evelyn Stevens?
I'm mute. I just want to put my two cents in for the FIP. Early on, remember, I asked that we table the policies that, the draft policies that were set for the FIP, and I'm asking again, can we table that to another meeting time?
So we're actually getting a little confused, because we're taking, we took public comment in the middle of the discussion, because right now, we're talking about the event policy, and we got a little sidetracked, because we're also talking about, and I think it came up for Commissioner Hanchin when we're talking about events, because events do bring in money. So as long as there's vendors who are paying vendor fees, then the committees are bringing back money into the town with their events. I think that's why he brought it up now, and so it's a discussion, you know, and in making sure that, you know, when we have an event, what vendors are we bringing in? But if we can kind of come back and focus back onto the events policy, and if any of the commissioners have changes, or if this looks good, and then, you know, we're packing next month a little full, so we can kind of see which ones we want to approve and approve them altogether, but does everyone feel like this is one they're comfortable approving when we get there? I don't hear any objections, so we'll kind of put that on the list, and then move on to the drug testing overtime. This is kind of a discussion that has to do with policy, and this one will actually, would trigger a handbook change if we're doing this. I want to let Kyle introduce it. I want to also let the department heads know that when discussion comes up, they may join in the discussion to give their thoughts on these.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this was all my brainchild. It's on them as well, so. So we have kind of two handbook amendments that have been discussed, and we just passed a handbook amendment about when vacation time lapses and whatnot. That was a resolution we passed. We do the same thing for these. To clarify some areas where the handbook is currently not too clear, one is overtime pay. When employees get overtime, at what rate they get, and then having a callback minimum, so like a two, so if they get called in for a 15-minute job, you automatically get at least two hours' pay, unless you work past the two hours, then it's a normal rate. That's something that the federal government and other municipalities have set, just to kind of cover. And that would, of course, set for all hourly employees, of course, the department heads are salaried, so we don't, you don't get overtime, but that would be if anyone else has to come in. On-call pay, so if there's inclement weather, weather emergency, snow, stuff like that, there's a bit more of a regularly hourly pay, which we do already and have done in the past, but this kind of just clarifies when and where those times come in. And then event pay as well, so a special pay category for staff, time and a half pay for hours for special town events after hours and whatnot, so like Saturday events and whatnot. Normally, we just do straight overtime, and that has not been, like, formalized anywhere. So now we're kind of creating a category for event pay, and that way it also helps us track as we go and look at our annual budgets and whatnot. We can look back and see, alright, well, we had so many overtime hours, but how many of them were for events, how many were for inclement weathers, and how many were just general overtime in the Public Works and Police category. So that will also help track a lot of that, and we can see if the year-end budget, well, Marlboro Day and all these events cost X month, X amount in staff hours and event pay. So it's just another helpful way to track things. And then the last one is drug testing. I'm just requiring the public safety officers subject to a randomized drug testing. But I'll turn that one over to Chief Darnell. Let me know if, and Chief, let me know if there are any, anything I missed for the overtime pay, because like I said, that does apply to your departments, does apply to general government.
There's a question for discussion at the end of that, too, but let's let them, let's let them talk first.
I'll let Darnell go first.
I guess my only sort of call with this is based on how we do overtime currently. I understand what Maryland law is, however, if the need should arise, someone maybe take off for a couple hours for a doctor's appointment, or maybe half the day, or something like that, and then they have to work in an event or traffic incident or anything like that, when I think it's going to be hard to say that that's going to be something that someone wants to do if they know for the majority of it, they're going to be at a regular time rate. I understand the event rate may be different, but for the, for the other situations that are sort of impromptu, I just ask for a little consideration for that. That's all.
And you discussed that with the HR firm right there now. I don't think I had any direct conversations with the HR firm about that overtime.
I.
That was you, Mayor. I apologize.
Yeah, so I contacted them, because when I ran payroll, we did it per the Maryland law, and then I realized that the town was not doing it this way. And I do understand that, like, if you were on vacation, or you had a doctor's appointment, and now you have to work overtime, and you're not getting a time and a half, and I understand that people might not want to do that, and it is, like, you know, hard, but like, part of the job that gets signed on to is sometimes doing that overtime. So I just don't know. I don't know. What does everyone else think?
So the only thing I'll say to that, and I mean, I don't get overtime, but the only other remedy to this is you grandfather the people in who are currently employed, and then moving forward after this is passed, you go to a different policy. Now, with that said, it requires us to have a a timekeeping company that can actually break this out, because you're saying that we should have a special code for events. Well, that would be easily tracked if we could have our current vendor or another vendor to have a category that said events. So when we do, when they do overtime, they would just click events, and then put the number of hours. Then if you had regular overtime, which is for something that's non-event, it would be overtime. You would still be able to track that through the vendor, and they could send monthly reports. So we're not really creating anything differently. It's just that we're tracking it through the timekeeping system, which I don't know if we're able to do that right now with our current vendor, so we probably need to look at another vendor or upgrading the package that we have that will actually help us track a lot of different things that we're doing already. But to, I think, be fair, I mean, I guess some individuals who've been working here several years are already under the old or the current plan, and we're trying to adjust it. You know, that's just my thoughts for the overtime. But we could easily track this through, I guess we use ADP now, but to me, they're not very good with categories to use, so I think we could track it that way much easier.
Is it that they're not good with categories to use, or to your point, is there, is there a need for us to increase the package that we have, so that it can efficiently work and meet the, meet the needs, meet this current need?
100% sure, because I've been kind of talking about ADP for a little while, and I've not gotten a clear answer on do we need to upgrade the package or go to a different vendor? You know, we've all, you know, I've discussed with the mayor some other issues, like, we can't even see our leave, how much we have, so I just don't.
Come into that, because that's interesting, because I can't imagine that you won't be able to see your own leave. Is that what you said? You cannot see your leave? So if I am an employee of the town, I cannot log in anywhere to see my own leave?
So I think, I think they have to check their pay stubs, but I just wanted to say, we're actually, next month, we're going to review all our contracts, including the ADP contract. So I was wondering if we can kind of discuss the issues with ADP, and whether we want to look at different vendors or different options when we do that, so we can be more prepared with, like, here's everything, here's all our problems with ADP, you know, here's what it does, here's what upgrade package would do, here's what a different firm would do when we talk about it, like that summer planning thing I sent you guys has that on it.
Well. Yeah, thank you, but I just, I had a question that I don't think was answered, and so because that came up, it short-sighted the question, which was, if I'm an employee at the town, can I go in and see my own time?
Only if you pull up your latest pay stub. Like, it's on your.
So that means every person has access to go to ADP? That's what I'm asking, because of course, when you work somewhere, you need to be able to have access to your own, your own information, at least to be able to know when you can take off and things like, I mean, that just makes sense to me. So is that, is that something that they can do or not?
Yeah, they have, all employees have a portal they log into, put their time in, and can see pay stubs and their last paycheck and stuff like that.
So they can see their time as well, so.
It's not.
What my vacation approval is, that, I mean, things like that, like.
It's complicated, because they have to pull up the pay stub, like, instead of it, just when they go on the screen, they can see, it's just there. It's not just there. They have to click on their latest pay stub, and then look at their pay stub, and that will give it to them. But it's just a multi-step process, when it seems like it could just be there. I believe also the department heads can't, don't have it just there in front of them when they're approving staff's leave time. So they have to go up to their, into their staffs. I don't know if you guys pull up their pay stubs.
I send them, I send, I have to send department heads a month like that, and so. But I hope we can work with insurance to see if it's either a feature we have to tweak in the current ADP to make it work better, or if, like you said, a whole new contract.
Oh, yeah, so that, because that, yeah, I think something like that needs to be upgraded, or we definitely need to be looking to a new system, because it sounds like there are quite a few tweaks that could be made to make this all work a little bit more efficiently, and also track for budgeting purposes next year. I mean, I definitely have a couple of solutions, or at least suggestions to that for our piece. But, yeah, for someone to actually have to ask you about their time is, at least their vacation is a little archaic to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're gonna, we're gonna review just every contract we have, set up a schedule for looking at them. The ADP is one that the employees have wanted reviewed. They've said they wanted it reviewed for a while, to me, so that, that's why that's part of, I believe.
Will we be discussing that, then?
I don't know if I have my summer planning thing in front of me, but it's on that summer planning sheet. Oh, here it is. Got it. So I believe it is in July, but let me check. Gee, are you seeing it, Kyle? I'm looking at the chart, but maybe that's my issue. Contract review, July 12th. So July 12th has rebranding, entertainment tax, review of economic development firm proposals, property standards ordinance, parking ordinance, contract review, which that's what contract review is, and then financials, policies procurement ordinance, charter changes, and the proclamations, so. So we'll also discuss it July 12th, and then we'll be, we should be able to vote on it on July 26th. I know, I know I sent it to you guys, and I was like, it's a really intense schedule, so if now, upon looking at it again, you're like, no, it's too intense, just email me, and I will spread it, spread out the summer planning and go into the fall a little bit.
Well, it would be helpful if we could get, I know it just says contract review, but I'm not looking at it, so I can't say I know it just says that. But if it says contract review, can we have a list of the contracts, or just, you know, email advance to know which contracts we're going to be going over, or does it list it out?
So the summer planning just kind of says what we're going to do, and then.
I mean.
Right, so, right, so, yep, tomorrow, when we're in the office, we're going to start building the agenda for the 12th. After we've sent the agenda to you all, we'll, like, we'll then, we then immediately start working on the background for each of these. Now, I already have a spreadsheet started with the contract review. So, you know, the, what we, what we got out of a little bit with the chaos of the budget was getting you guys the agenda two weeks ahead of time, and the packet one week ahead of time. We got back on that schedule for this meeting, and we are going to stay on that schedule. So the agenda will come out to you guys, for you all to review at some point tomorrow, and then on the you'll receive the packet with all that information in it, so you have a full week to review everything before the meeting, like this last one.
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay. Um. Okay, do we have other comments with regard to this overtime and event? I'm sorry, the overtime, the event pay, the callback, the drug testing, because this is a policy that we're now clarifying and implementing for the employees. I do have one more thing to say about the overtime, which is just that, like. I worry, and maybe this is a legal question, like that needs to go to insurance or it would have to go to insurance because I don't think a municipal lawyer would know the answer, is like, what kind of legal situation are we in if we've been paying overtime wrong? Or if we continue to pay overtime and we pay overtime differently to different employees? Um so that's my concern and why this situation kind of concerned me.
To, to Chief's point, um are we not able to, with this new policy, you know, say as of this date, you know, this is the overtime policy going forward, anyone, you know, who was hired before the date that the policy is approved. Uh you know, subject to whatever the rules were previously, but new hires after this date, this is the policy that we're implementing. Is that, is that a possibility?
That's what I'm kind of unclear on because so basically, there was no policy. There was just overtime and it was being applied differently from this overtime final rule.
We've done it in the past with time. Um we've done like, anyone hired after the state, this is how it's going to apply to you. Yeah. So I think the main thing we have to get from the HR firm is and, and that's with the times. That's not legally set, your, your time accruals and stuff like that. Um but obviously, if this is like a legal issue where we're violating the law, won't be able to get away with it. But if it is like something where the town has some leniency, um that'd probably be a poor decision.
So the, so the concern is that we might be abutting state law on overtime?
That's what I don't really know. I was told by the HR firm, like, yeah, no, that's not how you pay overtime. So I, I didn't actually kind of, I, I probably should have gotten into the legal, like, but could we pay overtime like that? Like, when I mentioned the event pay thing to them, they were like, if you want to, but like, so um so I'm trying to balance what our current employees are used to. That's kind of where the event holiday leave came in or event overtime came in was like, trying to balance what our current employees are used to with what we're required to do. So
Yeah. So how about, I'm sorry. So if we are, if there's still a question of legality, how about before we approve this, you know, let, let's table it. Yeah, I know we're adding a lot to, to, to next month. But uh table it until the discussion, let's try to get that answer within these next two weeks.
Yeah.
Then solidify it at the work session for, for approval at the next meeting.
Okay.
If we need, if that needs to be a motion, make that motion.
Um because what we're going to actually do is choose which ones we're approving rather than tabling ones, like the way we did with the previous one.
Okay.
When we make the motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question about, so to Darnell's comment about um which I understand, you know, that folks that have been hired or staff that have already been hired and have been working with this assumption and that, you know, it sounds like if they do the events and that is, of course, overtime. So we may need to, is, is, is that correct? Is that correct? So on top of their pay when they do that. Okay. When they, when they're at events and they're supporting events, that's overtime pay, is that correct? On top of their pay, right? Okay. So I was just wondering, so um in terms of like, how many, well, it may be at this point, if once we find out whatever it is that we need to know, of course, then that will turn into a scheduling issue. Because of course, I'm sure that he'll need to have so many people on hand each day. And um it's just a matter of just maybe working that out um uh with advance notice. Um and making sure, because I, I'm just thinking, I know this is going to have to be worked out in the legal, the legalities of it all and, and everything. But after that, of course, um if they're not grandfathered in or however it's going to work, then of course, it's just going to be based on scheduling and kind of getting everyone used to or familiar with um a new setup, saying that if they're not, you know, if they're needed during the week, you know, it's about rotating the schedule, have them uh support those different events, which I know is going to be a bruiser if you're already getting uh overtime pay. But um hopefully, th- this will be an opportunity to grandfather those folks in like uh Chief mentioned. I don't know.
Check the legality of grandfathering current employees in on that and report back on that. Um and then the other question I, just before we move off of this to the FIP and the citation ones. Um the question at the end of the drug testing is, do we want to implement this policy for all staff that is authorized to drive a town vehicle in addition to the public safety officers? So that's kind of what I'm asking you guys, policy wise.
So do we not drug test our police officers already?
We don't, it's like randomized drug testing. A chief explains it better than I do. I put you on the spot, Chief, to explain how it works. He's like, no. He just like, okay, I think he tried to unmute. Basically, if I remember it correctly, like all our employees would be given a number. And then every month, oh, here you are. Catch me if I'm wrong. Every month, the, the company would draw a random number from one to a hundred. So like every month, we might have an employee drug test, or we might not have an employee drug test. Currently, the way it is, is if an employee gets in an accident or for some other reason, uh there's like a, a list of them, then we would trigger a drug test. This is just completely random and has nothing to do with anything else. Did I get that right, Chief?
So I don't know, my connection dropped. Um I did hear the latter part, which for the most part, yes, that's correct. So what happened is the police department has to do this. Um and it has not been done in the past. Um so I reached out to insurance. Say that again?
How often, he said?
Yep. Sorry, how often?
So it's random. So that's, that's what we have to figure out. So as a town, we can set our own guidelines. So I believe like what the mayor is saying. So let's say we have twenty employees. We can have a system where insurance has a hundred and ten numbers, or a hundred and fifty numbers. And either each month, bi-monthly or quarterly, they'll pick out three numbers. And if one of those three numbers that they pick out is an employee's number, that employee has to go get drug tested. If nobody is selected, then nobody goes that particular period of time. But we have to have some type of system and that's what we have to create. Because when I went to insurance about it, they said, well, what would you like to see done? There's a variety of ways of doing it, you know, like you said, monthly, quarterly, or whatever. Something as a I mean, I, I'm fine with, you know, this as well. So um if we're doing it every month and everybody's getting selected, you know, we're talking about um having to pay for these tests. But also, if we have, to be transparent, if there's more people involved, the cost goes down because you have more um opportunities. But if you're only trying to drug test four people and you're doing it, you know, that infrequent, your, your cost goes up. But if you show that, you know, you're at least testing people or testing and nobody's getting selected, your number can go down. If that makes sense.
But you're still testing, so why not test in-house?
I, I mean, I think for it to be truly randomized, that's part of it. Like, there can be no, like, like, it's totally possible the same employee would get picked every month, right? And if that happened randomly outside, it would be a random thing. If that was happening and we were internally drawing it, it would certainly field of that employee that we were targeting them.
And um the, there's like a Maryland law about legitimate business purpose for drug testing.
Right. Yes. So the, the thing is, we can't just say that all our employees have to get drug tested. Um because we need a legitimate public or legitimate purpose to test the employees. So that's why this question is here about, do we want to implement it for all staff that is authorized to drive a town vehicle? Um so that would be like the department heads, public safety and public works. But we can't add randomized drug testing to our administrative staff because there's no justifiable purpose to do it.
Well, I, I don't know how they did it, but I know that Bowie is a hundred percent drug free and they test everybody. So um I'm not sure what, what, what they did, but I, I called and asked them. So they can test anybody. And I think they mirrored that. It's a government agency. People are uh able to see documents, sensitive information, you know, deal with money and things that they're, they're able to, they, they've justified by saying, I guess they're a government. They want to make sure that people are
Yeah.
up and up. But I'll have to get more information or somebody could reach out to them. But yeah, I, I reached out to them and they're a hundred percent. Um they randomly drug test all their employees.
What's your opinion? Or without your opinion, I'm sorry.
I, I defer to the board, but you know, I
I mean, how many, oh, at any given time, how many outside of? Well, yeah, I mean, you had a point with the system documents. I was thinking about driving vehicles, but there's
Yeah. That's what got me too. But at the same time, I mean, are we going to tell these people that work for this that we don't trust them?
No, it's not a matter of not trusting. While we're small right now, my thing is, we're small, we should put these things in place to help prevent liability. Because as we grow, um we could have, we have what, ten or fifteen employees now, whatever the number is. If we have twenty, thirty employees moving forward and you have that many vehicles out on the road. And then hopefully in the future, somebody may agree to get a town vehicle. So when you all travel, the commissioners or anybody uh or a staff, you need, needs a vehicle to go to an event. Now that staff who wasn't originally on the list now has to be on the list because they're driving a government vehicle. So you know, it's, it's a variety of things. I'm just looking to hopefully look towards the future while we're small, so we're not having to do this again and again. That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's an issue. Yeah, thanks to you. I, I don't think it's an issue of relaying mistrust to, to town staff or anything like that. I mean, we are, we're, we are a government. And you know, government agencies and neither, even contractors who work for government agencies, you know, have some level of requirement for, for drug testing. It's just the sensitivity of the information that's dealt with. So I don't, I don't think um it would be relaying a personal or, or any type of mistrust. It's just, like I said, sens- sensitivity of information needs to be protected for, for the town at large.
Good point. Thank you, Commissioner.
So it sounds like we're, we're kind of wanting to do all the employees if insurance you know, we, we got to check with them and make sure the sensitive documentation is a lead, whatever that term that Kyle used is. And otherwise, you know, whatever, basically check with insurance is what I'm hearing on that. Okay. Okay, so that gives us what we need to go back and deal with this. And this is like kind of a, a bigger, it has to separate out from this anyway. But that gives the guidance that um town staff and I need, so. Okay, um what I'm just going to do, it's getting late and we have two more policies to go through. So I'm going to put the resident comment after we discuss those other two. So if you can put a, uh just make yourself a note, um so you can comment on all of them. So we're going to go to the uh business improvement facade improvement grant application awards policy. The Sustainable Communities Working Group has asked us um to table this for their comments. I kind of verbally gave them this information last month and um sent it to them over email last week. I don't know if we want to discuss it, you know, with our comments, um what everyone wants to do there. So
Uh Sarah, I, I have to uh say that, no, you did not talk about this prior to
So, so thank you. We just need to keep it to the public comment period, which we're not quite there yet. Um so
This is not public comment.
So um John, I need you to cut that mic because we're having public into the comment. So um so that the, maybe Kyle, can you take us through this so that we can let the commissioners discuss it and then make, we haven't made any voting decisions yet, but this is for discussion.
Um facade improvement program um. So it's uh page one hundred twenty-two in the packet, those following along. Um so the town receives funding from the state um for improving the downtown building, major facades. So pretty much it covers um how like applications and notices are sent out to businesses. Um how the sustainable community kind of processes of the town and the sustainable process those and work with the business owners. Um and then moving through clerk's office, accepting applications and um copies being submitted to sustainable communities. And then their storage for two years in case um like some are not selected that year, but for the next year. Um they could talk about how the community worker group review the applications and complete checklist as to eligibility. And then um pretty much the same will commute group of markhamists eligible and ineligible based on the checklist um that they create. And then uh pretty much the town reaches out to the businesses, notifying them of their eligibility status, copy of application. And then the work group will prioritize them um to present for the board commissioners on nor priority for funding awarding. So that the board can uh vote to award funding based off of the uh procurement policy and issuing checks and whatnot. Yeah, so that's pretty much the run through without getting um too in the mud on it.
I guess I, I would like to hear kind of what every, the rest of the board has to say about these policies. Um even though, you know, we are also going to be getting comments from sustainable communities.
Um I, I personally think that the, the policies itself, you know, I, I think they're fine for moving in the direction that they need to go. I think it creates, you know, an equitable environment for the businesses in the town. I think it creates an opportunity for all the information to be available and present to the different uh businesses in town. Um the, the one thing I'll say in, in response to uh you know, of course, the, the committee having the opportunity to do that is the, at least from the calendar that I'm looking at, the next scheduled SCWG uh committee meeting isn't until after the work session and the next town meeting. So we decide to, you know, table this and laugh for those, for those comments. I would encourage, you know, those comments.
I think we lost you. Can everyone else hear him or no?
We, no, we lost him.
I, I would, I lost you. We, we would encourage those comments. Yeah, he's gone. We'll give him a minute to come back. And does anyone else have comments while we're waiting for Commissioner Colbert's buffering to work?
Now on this subject at this time, thank you.
Um I think he's going in and back out. The thing I will say is um right now, the process for awarding state funds to town businesses. Um you know, I, I have received comments from town businesses and town property owners concerned about the way the process is done. Um so if we are going to not vote on this, um I'm going to ask that um no grants be, no new grants be approved um until this is approved. Um I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that. Um, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that.
I will agree.
Commissioner Lot, Commissioner Duckett, do you have anything on this?
Duckett isn't here anymore.
I am here.
Both of them came back.
I've been here through the entire thing. Thank you.
Everyone's losing connection, so it's getting crazy. Okay, um. Oh, then our our last one is the citation proclamation policy, and I think it's going to be best for us to move that to the twelfth, since that's when we're discussing. The rest of them, it's gotten pretty late. So, so it looks like kind of the only policy we would really be approving would be the events policy. So do we want to just table this whole thing to? Discuss again on the twelfth and. Vote on the twenty-sixth. Is there a motion to table the policy approvals to July twelfth?
My motion. My motion that we we table it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, and John, you can do the voting.
Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Oh, I think he's got bumped off.
That's been happening a lot tonight.
How do you vote? President Franklin, how do you vote?
I vote I. Can you restate the motion for Commissioner Colbert? He just came back in.
Okay, the motion is to table the policies. Until the July twelfth board work session will allow more time. Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote? Commissioner Duckett?
I.
Commissioner Henshaw, how do you vote? And Commissioner Lot, how do you vote?
I.
Motion carries. I do have one resident that would like to comment regarding the policies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay.
All right.
Yes.
Clay, you're you're on.
Joe or Clay, Old Marlboro Pike, um, regarding the drug policy, the drug testing policy. Um, even if you can't find justification for doing it for everyone, uh, I would suggest at least doing it. Uh, for people who are dealing with money, either taking money in or have the ability to sign checks. Um, based on something that happened at a place I used to work. So that was it.
Thank you. That's advice. Okay. All right, so um. We are going to move on to the town rebranding initiative. Kyle, do you kind of want to give an overview? Because I I don't think we're where we were hoping to be at this time anyway. So it's just kind of informative from Kyle.
Uh, yeah, just uh, progress to town, just looking for some firms. To assess with the rebranding process and whatnot. Uh, the mayor and I met with one, but they're based all the way in Utah. Um, so they're kind of out of the scope, but they have done rebranding for like equestrian theme in the past and and other towns and cities. Um, but I think we're hoping to go with something a bit more local. Um, but we do have some future meetings, parking planning and uh, experience for insurance and whatnot. Hopefully some of those. Provide some grant fundings to help push this initiative board, um, since it's the county kind of asking for it for the upper mark, for the town and the upper area. Or they should be fronting some of the bills, so.
So just to kind of recap, right now, what the town is looking on at doing is um, hiring a firm to kind of. For a a smaller price um, for um. Helping us develop a new logo and brand and then um. We're hoping to get some assistance to um, actually pay for that brand to be put on things. So that's where we're at and what we were hoping was we had a whole slew of of branding firms that. Town administrator Snyder was contacting, uh, but we did not get the response. We were hoping from them, kind of like how I had that whole slew of lawyers. It got down to two. Um, so we're we're continuing to work on that and see if we can get some more firms. Uh, so we will have hopefully that. For this, this will be a discussion item on every meeting until we get through it. Does anyone have input on that?
So will, so will the county be um, providing or assisting? I know you mentioned assistance and we're asking for assistance, but even if we're reaching out to a company for rebranding. Are they providing assistance with that as well?
Is my understanding that they are not providing assistance with that. Um, so that's like kind of reallocating.
Do we, do we? Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's going to be reallocating um, some ARPA funds and yeah, it's all ARPA funds that's in there, I think.
Do we have an idea of how much um, based on your current um, evaluation or at least um, search? That the cost for that?
So I was looking to keep the cost around ten thousand. The Utah guy was like. Oh, I think twenty thousand, but I don't think we're gonna front that. Um, so we really have to, you know, if everyone tells us that ten thousand is unreasonable, then we'll have to reassess.
But I know Park and Planning is looking into some, like, some of their. Different grant programs or any assistance that they could give. So hopefully at the meeting uh, this week, they have some updates because they were tasked with looking into that at the last meeting.
Yeah, because the meeting is tomorrow, so we'll have more information on the assistance that is available then.
So for the. The rebranding firm, are we looking to? Aside from, you know, whatever partnering we may or may not do with the county, are we looking for them to like give us new? New new logos, new slogans or whatever, or I mean, I would imagine we would reach out to the to the. Town first, the citizens first, to see kind of what the thoughts are, if there's any suggestions of new logos or slogans or anything like that. What 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 exactly are we looking for the rebranding firm to to do?
So um, right now, for for as far as public outreach, right now, it's kind of going out on constant contact and it's like, can you put? Can you fill out our virtual comment box with any preliminary comments you have? Um, we are looking for the the firm kind of to come to us with a price and some designs and I'll say, okay, yeah, like this is the firm. Um, and then either. It's possible that like, I will just kind of put together a survey to start sending out to get feedback and, you know, you guys can approve it. Um, or the the firm will actually do some public outreach. Um, we are also talking about, we've been having kind of some struggles getting the residents. Um, the information like, because we're reaching out on digital networks, so we've been talking about setting up the A-frame signs. Um, or communities so that the residents can kind of go online and vote or go online and fill out a survey and have that. That information there, because maybe they're not all, you know, opening their constant contact or watching the website or Facebook or Nextdoor. Did I answer your question or not?
Yeah, yeah, you did. So did, I mean. I guess the 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 spirit of my question was, you know, having, you know, the the community, the citizen involvement and what. Things are going to look like and then a secondary question is. You know, if the town or if the county is paying for the broader. Branding effort. Okay, we're still.
Yeah, the broader, are we paying for the broad rebranding effort or just the logo?
Well, well, I was thinking if the if the county isn't paying for the broader, you know, rebranding effort, like, you know, we're responding, we're paying for the. The firm and, you know, just kind of everything beyond that. Um, making sure that those two things either that we're not basically having two rebranding sessions with what the county's trying to do for October and then what we're trying to do long term.
Yes.
And.
Yeah.
Oh, to build off that, um, so obviously we need something to put the new brand on. Um, and so that's where there is a hundred thousand dollar in the county DPWT. C I P budget for downtown Upper Marlboro Streetscape. Um, which we've been working with uh, DPWT. They've gone through a lot of leadership changes. All the people we work with keep retiring or moving on. So we finally have been assigned kind of a deputy director um, who's working with that and um, to free that money up. And so our plan right now that the board's discussed a couple of years ago actually is like benches and trashcans and planners and stuff like that. So kind of if we get the brand, pay for the brand, that brand would go on those items that are purchased through county funds. But obviously the town does not have any funds set up for purchasing. Any of those items with town tax dollars, so it's kind of concurrent. Um, and the rebranding effort has kind of given us some leverage on the county. Um, for the rebranding to free up those funds and possibly some other revitalization funds as well. Because it's something they want and there's funding that we could tap into to use it for. Um, so it's kind of given us leverage and and in with like the county exec's office, we told the county exec, hey, but try and work with DPWT with this pot of money for Streetscape. And then all of a sudden, now we're having people talk with us. So it's kind of been a leverage game.
That's, yeah, I was trying to get a count, make sure we're using that leverage to shake those.
Wasn't part of the point to get rid of the tobacco leaves.
Yeah, so we'll, I mean, we'll just be working on it. I just, we had hoped to have a a selection of firms for us to look at tonight. That didn't work out, but we're going to keep working on it. So we're updating you, we're talking about it, want the public to be aware of what's going on. So talking about it every meeting is kind of what we're going to do for a while. Same way we did the budget. Um, there is one public comment.
I've got Patty Calacott.
Hi, Patty Calacott, Church Street. Um, so I'm looking at this rebranding and I think this is probably the first time I've seen it. I haven't been to previous meetings. Um, but is this how we are looking to rebrand the town as a horse town? And how does that horse brand fit our demographics? How does it fit anything within the town itself? And then secondly, as I just heard, uh, the tobacco leaves are what built this town. And to get rid of that seems very odd. So I don't know how this is being looked at for one and two. Um, when would the town be opening where we can actually have citizens come to the town? And talk about this instead of everything being online? Because we have been closed for two years and everything else seems to be open, but these meetings continue to be virtual. And we have a town hall.
So, okay, so I'm just gonna, so that's more, this is more moving into general public comment. So I'm going to take the comment on the rebranding. When we move to general public comment, we can get back to the other issue. Um, okay, so I've I've put your input regarding rebranding. Okay. There are any other hands up? Um, so I am going to. Move us into the public comment, period.
I have Patty Calacott, I would like to speak. Patty. I have Joe War Clay that might speak.
Joe or Clay, Old Marlboro Pike, um, I wanted to remind everyone that early voting for the primary starts next week. Um, I believe it's July seventh through the fourteenth and then the primary is the week after. Um, and thank you all the people who attended the uh, hybrid meeting for the Friends of Library. Um, I now have some experience with doing hybrid meetings, so I can tell you things that don't work if if Kyle's interested. Or John.
Thank you.
Next I have Monica Williams. Monica?
Hello. Hi, um, just um, expressing concern about the tone of the beginning of the meeting. I haven't really ever seen so much pushback or a proclamation. Um, so I'm hoping that the push, none of the pushback is related to not being inclusive because of the. Uh, I guess one is Juneteenth and the other is prior. So I'm just hoping that the pushback is truly about. Having an open discussion about the details of the proclamation and it's, I sincerely hope it has nothing to do of of. Being biased against either one of them. I guess I should put it that way. And then also just. A reminder to people to just be a little bit more courteous. There's like a lot of nastiness um, that occurred. Uh, especially in the beginning of the meeting today and then also just in general, just from folks, the way they speak to some of the board, uh, the board members. Um, that I've not noticed in previous administrations, but suddenly now it's happening. I don't know why. Well, I could say why, but I'll leave it, I'll leave that alone. Um, but just a reminder to have some civility uh, and just be patient and courteous and you can get your point across without being nasty. That's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
Next I have Patty Calacott. Patty?
Okay, a couple of things. Uh, Sarah, I sent an email to you regarding the red light cameras, speed cameras. And the annexation, and I did not get a response back for that. I will expect that you will somehow publicly respond back to that in some way. Um, I have a contact, you guys were talking about June, Juneteenth. And I have a contact that's looking to do a Juneteenth Maryland Home and Garden tour within PG County. And they would like to include some of our. Some, uh, like the uh.
Gardens.
The church. Uh, Union United Methodist Church for one who has been around. They also had, uh, their original church was out on Valley Lane and they have. The graveyard as well. Um, so I started talking to him about some of the history within our town. That may be included as part of this PG County Juneteenth tour. Um, I still want to talk about when town meetings will actually be, when town hall meetings will actually be. Um, held at the town hall. Um, and then also if there's any information regarding the old elementary school and the stone building. And then finally, um, we have four police officers. Um, and they, I don't see anyone in the evenings and weekends. And when can we anticipate seeing some police coverage? O- over the weekends and 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 evenings. So you can answer any and all of those.
All right, thank you. Um, I will address a few of the comments, um, but we're just gonna like. Close mics. So. With regard to your questions, I am actually preparing uh, a new thing that I'm initiating, which is a. A kind of quarterly update on the projects within the town. Um, and then it it's kind of, it will get put out. Probably linked to in constant contact and put on the webpage because it's a boring paper. Um, so then everyone will have access to that information on at least a quarterly basis. And um, with regard to town hall, I now understand because I kept getting messages, town hall is closed, but town hall is open for a business. Um, town hall meetings are still virtual, um, because right now we need to have a blended system. So that we can include the people who have not been included in the past and are now part of the process because they can attend virtually. And um, let's see, then um, as and as you know, we were trying to, we're, we've been working to bring on a fifth officer and that's the trigger. For evenings and weekends and hiring a police officer is not a quick process. For evenings and weekends and hiring a police officer is not a quick process. So we, um, we all just need to be patient with that as we go. Do any of the commissioners have any comments they want to make? Okay. I don't see any other hands up in your unadministrative updates. Does staff have anything?
COVID test at town hall before they expire and we're closed on Monday. It's all trash being picked up on Tuesday. We have a blood drive on July eighth and a movie night on July ninth.
Okay, um, I just wanted, before we leave, so we've pumped a couple of other things into July's agendas. And so I want to run the agenda through everyone and see if we want to move some stuff. Down the pike a little bit, so we don't have quite such long meetings. Um, so that the July 12th agenda right now would have for old business, we have rebranding. Um, the policies that we tabled tonight, the proclamations that we tabled tonight, and we were going to discuss the entertainment tax. And then for new business, we have, uh, review of economic development firm proposals, though I don't know if we've gotten any yet. Um, the property standard ordinance, the parking ordinance, our contracts to review. And then our financial policies. It was always a big, that was why I kind of sent it out. It's, it's huge. So. I would recommend we bump the entertainment tax down the road a little bit because I'm not sure we got that information from the state that. Does anyone else? Do we, do we still want to tackle this or do we want to kind of bump a few things down further?
Does that decision have to be made tonight about that, about pumping some things, about moving some of these?
Well, okay, so I'll send the agenda out with everything on it tomorrow. I'll have John send that out. So if you guys can give feedback to John. By the end of the week, that would allow us to make sure we're preparing the right documents for everything. Um, because we'll need to get those documents to everyone on the fifth, yes, on the fifth. So. Is that fair? We can, you can kind of give feedback. I, by the end of the week.
Sure, I can.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mm-hmm. Summer.
All in, I don't think we need a second on this one, John, do we?
Second, third.
I do need a second moment. Yeah.
I do, okay. Alright, you want to take us down the vote?
Yeah, who seconded?
I care.
I did.
Lot.
Okay, very well. Uh, Commissioner Colbert, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner, um, Duckett.
Aye.
President Franklin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And, Sir Lot, how do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, the vote, motion carries. Thank you.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-five PM.
Good night, all.
Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.